Our most heavenly Father, we come to you and thanks for all of your grace, your gifts and the bounty that you have given us. Thank you for all of our blessings, our first responders and police who protect us and keep our home in quality and safety. And we ask you to come dwell with us today as we consider the matters before our county that may change lives for people and may it be something that magnifies your name. Amen.
Gentlemen, we have the minutes of the previous meeting. Take a motion to approve them.
Second.
So moved. Mr. Johnson, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. We have any presentations this morning? Nothing in consent, we'll go right to debate. New business?
Yes, sir. Shelley Blackburn with the CVB is here to present this first item for us.
Morning, great to be here.
Good morning.
So back in January of 2021, the Columbia County CVB participated in a study with the Georgia Department of Economic Development Tourism Product Development Team, that's a mouthful. As they did a virtual visit of Columbia County, several months later, they came back with a document that gave some suggestions for tourism product development. One of the number one inventions in that document was public art for Columbia County, specifically public art at Savannah Rapids Park to go along with the love locks that we currently have on the railing there at Savannah Rapids Park. So our committee put out an RFQ, we had 13 artists that responded to that. We narrowed that down to four, and now today we have before you the final selection that the committee has approved. It has also gone before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Panel as well. So we are seeking approval to have this sculpture put in place at Savannah Rapids Park.
And you're gonna take all the locks off the wall?
We are not.
The last, y'all's last meeting, weight of the locks were putting a strain on or something. Can you kind of address that?
Sure, sure. So I think someone referenced the love locks in Paris and how they, you know, when they continued to add up to the railing that did become a problem. And so I think there has been some discussion about that, but this committee does not plan to remove the locks at this time.
We do not have any problem with locks in our gates or whatever, whatever.
Well, to my knowledge, the Canal Authority is looking into that, but at this point, there is nothing that would cause us to be concerned.
I think my biggest concern with that piece is, is even though we put this up, what's gonna prohibit people from continuing to add to the other location? So we'll put a sign up that says, "Don't do it here," but if people want to do that, there's really no way for us to know how many are added unless we kind of draw a line where they are now and remove everything above it. I'm not, I'm not 100% convinced it's gonna fix our problem of adding to the weight. I love the idea of the public art, and I love the idea of doing it. I'm just not so sure about the idea of not removing what's there and not allowing that to be there going forward. It's open for discussion, you know, if the committee's fine with that, I mean, it's okay. I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about that. And then the second piece is, and just a question for Shelley, I was under the impression that the love locks were gonna be on the left side, as I'm looking at this picture, on the left side of the headgates. You've actually got it on the tow path, so has the Canal Authority approved the placement on the tow path?
That document is actually not correct. So the artist recommended to put it there.
Okay, good.
Not weird as well.
It's gonna go on the left side where we discussed?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's probably better. That's good.
And while it may not resolve the issue that we have right now, I think it will certainly alleviate the additional weight by having a piece of public art where people will want to attach their lock there as well.
This has a $20,000 price tag. Additionally, it's gonna have county-wide visibility and impact. Do you want to send it to debate?
Quick question, where's the money coming from?
The CVB is paying for it.
And we couldn't find anybody local to do it?
We had two artists locally that submitted for it, but they did not meet the parameters that the committee had set forward.
Just, I'm still kind of hung up on these, on the locks that are there. Not removing them, is that a, is that more of a budget thing? Is that because the CVB can't afford to do that, or is that aesthetics that you don't want to do it?
Well, I believe the part, the Recreation Advisory...
Correct. I think that the CVB and the committee, our Product Development Committee, are fine with really both options. But the Recreation Board, they were really concerned about moving the locks that were there and sort of the backlash that that would cause. So that's why they have that recommendation. So I think that from Shelley's perspective in the CVB, they are open to either option for moving locks or removing locks or keeping locks.
I think, I'm, to the committee, I'm less concerned about the backlash than I am about the public safety of the issue there. And I think if we leave those locks there, people are gonna continue to add to them. And if the weight of those locks is a problem, then it's gonna continue to be a problem. My preference would be that we remove the locks, we don't discard them. If there's a way that we can put them on this new sculpture as we are...
Long as we don't have to pay a locksmith to pick every one of them.
No, 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 I think, I think, I think what we would do is we would cut them all, we would not cut the locks, but we would cut the poles themselves, slide the locks off, slide the locks on the new sculpture, and give them an opportunity to kind of start there, if that's what we decided we wanted to do. And then go back with a structure on that, on the headgates themselves that don't allow for locks to be put there, some kind of...
Are we allowed to do that, or is that the Canal Authority?
I think we'll have to work with the Canal Authority, but I think as long as we're willing to pay for it, we'll be, we'll be able to do it. I'm just, I'm very concerned about having a really nice, I think this is a great idea, and I'm all for this, I think we should have done this a long time ago, but I'm not sure that it's solving our problem by just doing this. I think they're gonna continue to add to where they are, I think people are gonna want to be out over the water, you know, "I don't want to put it over here, I want to put it over here," and over time...
They'll put a sign up that says they'll be cut.
Well, but then, but I think that's the issue, is do we cut all of them, or do we just cut the ones above the line?
Well, you take them all down, I just meant going forward. I agree with you, they need to be moved.
Yeah, so I would prefer to, you know, move forward, we can move forward this, but I would prefer to just examine what it would cost and what we could do to potentially move those locks off of there and then put a structure up there that would not allow for locks, and then let this be the place for locks going forward. And then any, anytime somebody put them anywhere besides that, we would have to remove them.
This will be easy, easy to add on to and remove all of those locks and then...
If we move them all and put them all, will there be room left on this?
This piece, we specifically picked because there's room for expansion in that area. So I think that...
Yeah, it'd be good to know how much expansion.
Sure, and I'd like to add, we have plans to beautify the space where this is going, down to the left, if you're walking up to the locks, just kind of a flat, open, grass area. We have, it's really wet down there, obviously, so we have some issues with that, but we want to landscape that and almost make that a park within a park with some benches and stuff centered around sculpture, so.
All right, so the gauge of this sculpture will accept locks if people want to put them...
Yes.
Back on there? All right, and we can, we can remove the other...
We can, if that's...
The other hands are...
...the fraction we have, we can figure out what that will cost and how we could best do that, and...
If it's the committee's wishes, I'm fine with partnering with the CVB. We don't expect them to pay for that. That's something that I think the county could potentially partner with the CVB to remove what's there, go back with another structure that's more suitable there, and just allow them to move forward with the cost of their project as they presented it.
Yeah, I make a motion, we'll move this to debate.
I'll second that.
We'll work on it. I'll call you, Shelley.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Chief.
This first item is a request to purchase 18 Lucas III chest compression devices. These are a small backboard and a device that goes over the chest and performs manual CPR compressions. It's proven that they have, create an environment where you have much better outcomes. There are two additional companies that make the automatic chest compression devices. However, one, they don't work in our EMS system. Our local EMS and other agencies all use the Lucas, as well as the two other manufacturers' products, they don't fit on our apparatus, they can't fold up or go in a case or anything like that. So our request, and staff recommends approval, the purchase of 18 Lucas III chest compression systems from Stryker, which is a sole source, the amount of $387,531.36 using ARPA funds.
Are these gonna be on fire engine, where?
They'll be on fire trucks and rescue trucks.
So is 18 enough?
Yes, sir.
Does we have 17 stations?
We have, well, we have 15 stations.
We have 15, so there would be one at every station.
There are more than one apparatus at...
And then a mobile?
And this is in case Gold Cross doesn't get there fast enough?
Well, Gold Cross carries these devices as well. It's to, as quickly as possible, begin the level of chest compressions that you just can't achieve manually. And of course, in a case of delayed transport, then you're providing the highest quality CPR that you can. It allows the first responders to focus on airway and other interventions to achieve the best outcome.
Move to consent.
So moved.
This is a request to purchase 25 Zoll X Series EKG monitors. These are three or 12 lead EKGs. They're also transmittable, they'll have connectivity at all times, so as soon as you place the patient on the device, you're transmitting to the facility of choice those rhythms. They can be used by all of our medic levels, and you can have treatment courses from your ER physicians. And there are a lot of advanced features on these devices that, in combination with the Lucas and CPR cases, create better outcomes. But also, when you identify STEMI's and things like that, the hospitals can go in and already be ready to receive the patient, as well as being compatible with Gold Cross's devices. You simply just plug from ours into theirs and they move right on with patient care almost through time.
Are you saying that, if they're gonna, regardless of where they're going, it communicates with the hospital?
Yes, sir.
So the hospitals have all the same technology?
They're looking at the rhythm.
They're looking at the results.
Yeah, they're looking at the rhythm live. So they can be a part of issuing treatment orders as well, right, from the field all the way to the definitive care.
These will be paid for by...
ARPA funds.
ARPA, yep.
Maintenance, what is the line? I mean, we haven't had these.
Correct.
Opportunity to get them, but when will they have to be returned?
All right, we should, we should get at least 10 years on the devices. We'll set a rotation like we do with all of our equipment like this, so that we're not looking at 25 again, you know, at a particular time. The maintenance on the, this first purchase is five years. After that, we would have an option of how many every year to renew that. We currently have AEDs on all of these units, and we have the maintenance plan that we keep on those, as well as all the AEDs throughout the county.
But you won't need the AEDs.
The AEDs, this is a replacement for the AEDs. It will serve in that function as well for those scope of practice that don't allow interpreting an EKG. But all employees can, all of our firefighter managers can put patients on this device and transmit. They are on the MPPG.gov contract, so staff recommends approval and purchase of 25 Zoll X Series EKG monitors from Zoll Medical, the amount of $1,35,788.91 through the MPPG.gov contract ES2200, using ARPA funds, and to authorize it, Chairman, to execute the associated documents.
Second.
So moved. Thank you, Chief. No added items? Mr. Driver, do we have anything to talk about? Thank you, sir. Got some staff reports?
Yes, sir. I have the year-to-date run report, as well as just for the month of January, and our budget report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You may already provide this, I apologize if you do. Just year-over-year comparisons, I realize 20 was an anomaly, but 18, 19, just can we have, just compare the volume of activity to see how it builds with our increase in population? Interesting to see if it's not too much trouble.
Yeah, not at all.
No other questions?
Do you have any commissioner or public comments? Nothing in executive session? We will adjourn 8:46.
The boss.
26.
Nope, sorry.
Chair's on?
Already having the end of session and pledge, have a full quorum. Someone if y'all is...
Move to accept.
Second.
Go move. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one item for your consideration for addition, which is item I-2A. This is a traffic civil application for South Obelah Road at Columbia Road.
Sure. All right, presentations, agenda, we'll move right on into debate. Lockton?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Prather to come up and present these first two items for you.
Morning, Stephen.
Good morning, y'all. I'm gonna spend some money and save some money this morning. My first item up is a proposal for professional services for GMC, Goodwin Mills Haywood, in the amount of $166,988 to provide schematic design services for building A replacement project. As you know, we got started on this project maybe a year and a half ago. I did some preliminary work, we brought in another firm to help us kind of get a rough order of magnitude of size, scope, cost. So we went through some exercises with the directors, with administration, to kind of get an idea of what we were dealing with. That helped us kind of understand the cost, the additional costs that we needed to get this project to fruition. It kind of got us an idea of how we were gonna move departments around and the, and the size and the scale of our growth the next five to 10 years of this project. So we've reached out to Goodwin Mills Haywood, a very experienced firm in both Atlanta and Columbia, to help us get started on this project so that we're ready to hopefully start construction sometime maybe next year, next summer, something like that. So this is the first part of that. This does not guarantee the full design services, but this is just a schematic upfront cost. If we decide to move forward in November or whenever this is done, then we can go ahead and sign a contract, so this is just a proposal from them. Staff recommends approval.
166 grand doesn't get us just a schematic?
Yes, sir. So when you look at the cost of professional services, there's a percentage fee in there usually, or you can do a lump sum. So we kind of guesstimate on the cost, overall cost of the project, and take that percentage, that 5.5%, and then you have different phases of that project, which is schematic design is usually 15% of that 5.5%. You could potentially look at a total design services fee of a million, million and a half dollars.
Is this a ongoing agreement? They don't just provide us with the plan, but they, they help us with all the transitions or new input that we have?
So yes, they will, they will walk us through the process. We'll be meeting with everybody, it's very hands-on. I think that's where up your...
Yeah, I'd probably not elegant with my question. They're not just gonna provide us a plan and leave it there, they are going to help us with revisions?
Yes, so we'll get through these design charrettes, these planning stages, and once we get to the final stage of schematic design, we have a design and a model. We can elect to move forward through the detailing of the project to get us to a bid set to construct it, or we can elect to put it on hold or select somebody new, but this gives us some flexibility.
I was a little concerned when we first started looking at this project. As y'all know, building A is gonna be a huge project, and this has kind of been a moving target. We have a lot of needs and we have only so much campus. So there's gonna be, either we're gonna have to build a big building A that's gonna be able to house us now and in the future, or we're gonna have to build multiple buildings on this campus as the county continues to grow. And that's just the way it is. We're completely out of space right now. I don't know that I have an empty office anywhere on the campus. So we know we have to do that, we have aging infrastructure here, we're having water intrusion problems, we've got mold issues, we've got all kinds of issues with this building that need to be addressed. But building A itself started out as just, okay, we're just gonna kind of replace this building, and now it's turned into the long-term solution for the entire government complex, which means the scope has grown. What I was not comfortable with was awarding something to an architect or an engineering group that would be a million-dollar contract, because we don't know exactly where this thing is going. We want to make sure we get some schematics and get some ideas, that's the reason we wanted to parcel this out, do this first piece. We'll be able to use it going forward, but this is really gonna help us design what we need for the long-term goals of the county, and then not necessarily be tied to them for the entire build-out, which again, may be a million-dollar-plus engineering and architectural contract. So I dial this back, that, I guess that's the part of the, you know, the question. We would be getting a lot more if we were engaging in the entire architecture and engineering contract, but we have scaled this down to just let them do this first, because I need to see what we need and what it's gonna cost us.
The amount of time we've already spent on this and the complexity of this project, something similar to the PAC, it's a very complex building, you have a lot of different departments, interactions, the functions, so it takes, it's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some money.
But this is just planning, this is just...
It's basically planning and schematic design, yes.
You'll know what the building looks like and where it's gonna sit, and you just won't have the, how big the pipe is, how big the steel is, are you, that's the stuff, the detail you won't have.
Who's gonna be in what office, how many offices we have left, that's what it'll plan.
Other engineer board, is any of his information usable going forward?
Yes, so we spent many months with that, you know, trying to, trying to program and sit down with our directors, and we're gonna be able to use some of that information as well, yes.
And that was, just to kind of give you a different in the scope, I think we spent about $40,000 on that original one. We got some ideas, but we found out that we might need to take this up another level based on the complexity and the size of this building.
You need to think 20 years out.
Exactly. And I think that, you're right, Mr. Chairman, I think that's where, we're gonna have to build something, you're right, that's gonna serve us for a long time.
Move to consent.
Second, so moved.
Go move.
Second.
The second item I have for your consideration is a deductive change order for the Plaza Park project. This is for final accounting purposes, so we'll be deducting $114,945.23 from the contract to finalize that project. Staff recommends approval. And just for your information, this is change order one, but if you look at your backup, it'll say change order eight. That's just for our in-house kind of documentation.
They're not usually this slow getting money back, Stephen. I don't know what the deal is.
Had a lot of challenges on this project.
We had quite a few challenges, and I'm proud to say that this one's behind us.
Move to consent, sir.
Want to accept that money, huh? So move.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Stacy, you ready?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
I'm well, how are y'all doing? First item I have is an engineering proposal for an annual biosolids application program with the Adura Group. This is one we've done for many years, it's the same price as it was last year, and we have to present the EPD quarterly. So our first one will be at the end of March, so we're sending in a proposal for, or we're recommending a proposal for $15,500 to the Adura Group.
Yes, and this is, are they gonna run out of accepting this, or it, I think I asked that same question last year.
Yeah, I believe...
It's not, it's not something we're gonna run out of space down there?
Not currently, I believe we have to renew it this year. I need to look into that, I think we're at the end of our 10-year renewal on this, so we will have to renew it, and I believe this is the last year. But no, it's, I mean, they're just using the nutrients to fertilize grass.
Move to consent, sir. Second.
Our second item we have is a, we use a permanganate system at the Jim Blanchard Treatment Plant to treat iron and manganese coming out of the river. And the one we have now is currently, it's worn out, it's just old, we've used it for many years. And this is a budgeted item, this is a sole source replacement, because this is who builds all the equipment for Charis, who is who we use for the chemicals. So this, again, it's approved into budget, and staff recommends the purchase of this item for $250,458.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move.
Thank you, sir. Tides?
Morning.
Morning. Morning, Kyle.
I apologize in advance, I usually have hard copies, I'm trying to get with the times, and I'm on my laptop, so I'm gonna try to get through this. First item we have is realignment agreement with Queensborough National Bank and Trust for a portion of Evans Town Center Boulevard. We're requesting approval of this agreement back in...
July?
In August of last year, the Board of Commissioners approved abandonment of a portion of our county right-of-way. Part of that abandonment, the, was contingent based on disagreement, executing this agreement and instructing the improvements to the new right-of-way and the county accepting that. This is an agreement with Queensborough, basically allowing them on the county right-of-way. Lays out some of the details of the permitting process. So this is the next step required in that process, and staff recommends...
So with one vote, we'll handle both, where we'll have to have the public hearing and all of that, or is all of it one, or is it two pieces?
All, the abandonment's already taken care of.
Okay.
The abandonment's, again, contingent upon this. So this is the agreement to allow Queensborough to move forward with the improvements, basically telling the county, letting them know that we're in agreement with letting you on our, letting you on the county right-of-way, constructing the improvements, the county's gonna work with you through the permitting process, et cetera. Once the improvements are completed and accepted by the county, county will move forward with abandoning the right-of-way per...
Surplus of the property, the selling of the property.
Correct.
Abandonment's been handled, the surplusing hasn't...
That's correct, yep.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move.
The next item is for mitigation credits, purchase of mitigation credits for Horizon South Parkway widening, a total of 2.32 wetlands credits in the amount of $176,320 are needed from the AA Shaw Wetland Mitigation Bank, and 2,102 stream credits in the amount of $178,670 needed from AM Grandy Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank, or total cost of $350,000. South Parkway widening, uh, a total of two-point-three-two wetlands credits in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty dollars are needed from the AA Shaw Wetland Mitigation Bank and two-thousand-one-hundred-and-two stream credits in the amount of one-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and s, one-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars needed from AM Grandy Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank, or a total cost of three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Uh, again, this is for the Horizon South widening project for impacts, uh, in those environmentally sensitive areas. Staff covered out of the Tia.
Move to consent.
Second.
Go move.
The next item is for the purchase of mast arms, uh, from Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems for the traffic signal upgrade at William P. Parkway. Uh, staff has reached out to, uh, three different vendors, gotten three different quotes for the mast arm upgrade at the Riverwood, uh, Parkway intersection. Uh, as you may remember, uh, the upgrades for that corridor are currently under contract. Expected to be started March-April timeframe, um, and these, if the board approves the purchase of them, will come in in twenty to twenty-two weeks, uh, which would fall in line with the construction schedule and staff would install those along with the construction schedule, along with coordinating with the contractor out there on that, that project. Uh, the total amount is for fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred dollars funded out of the geo-bond.
Said something about the project starting March-April. After, after masters or no disruption?
It'll start after masters.
After masters.
I apologize.
Move to consent.
Second.
The last item is resolution number twenty-two oh nine for suspension of utility per, uh, encroachment permitting fee collections. Uh, staff is currently working on revising our utility permitting fee schedule. Um, while we work through these revisions, we're requesting commission to early suspend the collection of these fees from private utility companies. By schedule, we'll be brought back to the commission for approval and will require two readings for adoption. Process should, uh, prior to the next fiscal budget beginning. Staff recommends to temporarily suspending the fee.
We, we created this fee collection because we had expenses. County taxpayer was incurring a few of the plans for private companies, is that correct?
That's correct.
So now we're waiving, uh, the private contractor or whoever from paying these fees, so now it's back on the backs of the taxpayer, is that correct?
Sure, so originally, when, we noticed the, the need for this because the utility permitting, uh, department was growing with the, the needs of the county, and, uh, we brought forth, uh, the request to instate utility permitting fees, uh, and it was approved by the board June fifteenth. Uh, we knew that it, and it actually went live the twentieth of September of last year. Took a little while for the logistics to get off the ground with finance, IT, uh, building standards, et cetera. Um, but we knew that the county had not implemented a fee prior and there would be some wrinkles to iron out, and we've, uh, been live for five months. We've identified some of those wrinkles that we need to work through, that the, the utility companies are governed by different, uh, some are governed by shareholders, others are governed by the, uh, Public Service Commission, so how we apply these fees are, are how they're governed to make sure we're following state law.
Bill, we'll be able to get to where we're able to get cost of doing this off of the backs of the taxpayer?
Absolutely. Mr. Slotter's been in constant communication with several of the key folks of these utility companies, um, and we identified, again, the, have, and we have a good plan on resolving those. Get back in the end goal.
I'd request to move this to debate. Would, because I think we voted on it as a full commission, had a couple of readings since it was a fee, so I'd like...
Move to debate.
Second.
Go move. Item? Kyle, or is that...
Yes, I can take that. Uh, this is a, a signal application for the signal at Columbia Road at South Old Bel Air. Um, this is basically a request for a traffic signal, uh, is, we are requesting chairman's signature so that we can send this back to GDOT and basically start the application process to install that signal. Um, if a, if a, if the signal's approved, this document says that we would, we're willing to contribute to the cost of purchasing that signal if we decide to move forward.
Move.
Would, uh, we take this? I mean, thought he was in and there was a need for it to be there and all, so now we're just going through the process. Is the chance they would reject or not?
I, I can't speak, I can't speak for GDI. It, it warrants from what, from our, our end, by, so we feel it'll move forward, but I can't speak.
Okay, thank you.
Start our conversation with the district office, so Tyus and Mr. Beck, so they've been working, their staff's been working hard with the local district office. They beat it up hard there, and then once they're satisfied, they then give you the application to send to Atlanta for signature, so.
So it's been beat up?
It has been beat up pretty strong.
That's good.
They're just seeing that they're smiling, they've been, they've been beat up pretty hard about this.
Thanks for fending it off and, um, there is a need there for sure.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move. Driver, any legal items? Staff report.
Yes, sir. I have the, uh, year date budget report and the water and sewer construction project reports, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
U, UV still online, potentially happening?
Yes, sir. We're, next spring, um, early summer, they should be complete and, uh, have that going online.
Thought there was one that's gonna be done this spring.
No, sir. We just started construction in the fall. Those, it's about, you know, eighteen-month process, fifteen to eighteen months.
Early?
Yes, mhm. Yeah, they have just a big hole out at, uh, Clarksville. So there's, there, they have two different, contractors have two different crews working, one on each site.
Or, or public comment? Have a couple of executive session items, wish yours pleasure.
Motion, we just move them on to the full board.
Second.
Adjourned at nine oh seven.